Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Janer?
Here.
Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Padmore, you have something for the good of the order?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Semhar, would you like to come up?
Mayor, Council, I just wanted to take this time to recognize Semhar Gavridikin from our inclusive Sioux City liaison. Over the last few weeks, her efforts to increase diversity, inclusion, and equity in our community of bed recognition, not only locally but through the state of Iowa Red Cross. Weeks ago, she was awarded a Women of Where? Women striving to improve the quality of life in Sioux City. She was nominated by Claire Coley, who's in our homelessness outreach program, and she was the recipient of that award. And then she was recognized by the State of Iowa Red Cross with the Heroes of the Heartland Award for her efforts in diversity and equity. I will send each of you a link to a YouTube video that was done, produced on behalf of Semhar, that shows the value and just how well she's been received by members of our community and how well she's doing. It's very rare that we get to recognize someone for these awards, and it just takes volumes to the work that Semhar's done and the leadership she's done to increase equity and diversity in our community. And I thought it would be a special time to just recognize her for that.
On that?
Hi, Council folks. And everyone behind me, hello. Hello. All y'all are good and blue. I'm Semhar, I'm the Community Inclusion Liaison. So I've been here almost two years as of next week, on the 12th, actually at the joint meeting. I'll be here two years. So a lot of work has been done, a lot of work still has to be done, but it's exciting. It was cool to be recognized Woman of Excellence, and I thank Claire Coley for nominating me, and Yetzka Warren Castro for writing the recommendation, and my husband for also writing one, and for the Hero of Heartland he did as well. Thank you to Ship for sending Manape Lemire and Sun Rose Iron Shell for the video. I did not know that they did a video. I didn't know that they sang either, so that was really special.
Don't forget that song.
Yeah, it was really special to have that happen. And so it's been great. I'm still working on things, I'm still moving forward on items, so I'm excited. And thank you, Council, for always supporting initiatives I'm working on. I'd like to, I don't know if Jim wants to say anything, but Jim's my vice chair, and I love Jim, so Jim, do you have anything to say?
I always gave my chance when I could.
I was involved in the interviews with Semhar, all of them. And when you see something, I was afraid maybe Sioux City wasn't ready for it, but here she is, and she's a special person, she's really got a good talent. It's, I'm really blessed to know her, and our committee is really thriving with her help, too. So thank you for recognizing her.
Thank you for what she offers. Well.
Okay, we'll go to Arts Center Board of Trustees, Interviews. Jeff Baldus, tell us why you want to keep going.
Hi, my name's Jeff Baldus, and I'm Professor of Art at Briar Cliff University. And I have served on the trustees a couple different stints, so this would be a continuation term. And I've really enjoyed the experience there. I enjoy working with the Arts Center staff and seeing myself as an ambassador of the Arts Center anyway. This way it allows me to continue to be aware of what's happening and to offer my support to the leadership there as best I can.
Jeff, I'm really glad that you've reapplied, and I think your service on that board is as excellent as your artwork that I have seen and have purchased. It's so, it's so great. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
We need somebody from that other college on these boards, too, so we appreciate it.
Thanks for applying. Jeff was my teacher.
So don't hold that against me.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Full disclosure. I did want to ask you a couple things. I'm curious how you think we can better brand the arts in Sioux City? And I'm also curious, is your thoughts as how we can, how we can be more impactful bringing art into the public spaces that we have?
Well, those both are questions that require a lot of thought. I think that some of the things that they're doing right now in terms of bringing art splash back to the Arts Center and outside there is one way that has really helped in the last two years. And we've seen that, I think, at the Arts Center and awareness in the community. There are a lot of things that happen art-wise in the community, but they aren't always well-publicized, and they aren't always linked. So I can know what's going on at the Arts Center, but I don't know what's going on in the alleyways or things like that unless I'm doing Facebook or something. So I think marketing is publicizing, and the arts community's working together a little bit more closely to help promote. And that's just kind of off the top.
That's a great idea, linking those entities together, so one knows what the other one is doing.
One of my best memories is walking into Healan Hall, and there was this amazing sculpture right in the entryway, right between North Hall and Healan Hall, that was made by Jeff. And so I always think about how we're utilizing our walls and how we're utilizing some of our floor space that we have, and how we can bring more art to it. So hopefully you can be a big part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate your service.
Thanks.
We'll go to the Consent Agenda, items three through 13C. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read that number and state your name and address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Reading of the City Council Minutes of March 27th and 28th, 2023. I will abstain on the 28th because I could not be here, I was at another meeting. Four is a resolution scheduling a public hearing on the adoption of the annual budget and capital improvement program. Five is a resolution authorizing payment to HydroClean for the Floyd sanitary sewer interceptor cleaning and televising project. Six are resolutions fixing the assessed amount against private property adopting and living schedules of assessments for the weed abatement program. Seven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing Parks and Rec to apply for a MURD target grant to support the Cone Park, Cone Mountain Bike Development Project. B is a resolution authorizing the application to the Federal Transportation Administration for Funding for the Buses and Bus Facilities Competitive Program Grant.
Mike, could I ask Mike a question? Please. You might have it in here, Mike, but I'm just wondering, when, when will you submit that?
When would we submit it?
Has it been?
No, it has not been submitted until it comes to council here. So it needs to be submitted by, I think, the first week.
By when?
By the first week in May, possibly.
First week in May?
Yeah, I think that's.
And you'll probably hear back when?
Usually they've been taken four to six months.
What does?
Yeah, before they, because we applied last fall, and they decided in February, March, somewhere in there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You bet.
B is a resolution, oh, I hit that one. Let's go to eight, actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the airport terminal apron pavement repair and taxiway replacement lights project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the airport northeast taxi lane reconstruction and T hangar site improvement project. D are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution of intent to enter into an agreement with Arch Icon Development for an affordable housing project at 1300 West Third Street.
Mayor, this is the one I'd like to, a moment. Jill, could you come out and talk to us a little bit about this and who it's gonna help?
Sure. Jill Wanderscheid, Neighborhood Services Manager. So this is requesting a resolution of intent to provide $450,000 in home ARP funds, so those are through the CARES Act program, to provide for three permanent supportive housing units for those that are experiencing homelessness for 15 years, so that will include case management as well. Arch Icon is here today, too, if you have any questions related directly to them. But this would be a new building of 30 units to be constructed in the site where Everett School currently is, and that was a low-income housing tax credit project a few years ago. These funds are contingent on Arch Icon receiving low-income housing tax credits, so we'll know that later this year. But we felt this is responding to a need in our community of having more permanent supportive housing for those experiencing homelessness.
And then there will be, just to restate, there'll be support services offered? And they're gonna, the, whomever the service provider is, they will have an office on-site? Is that correct?
For this, this project specifically, I don't know if they'll have a permanent office on-site, but they will be on-site working with their clients that'll be living in these units.
And then it's one, two, and three-bedroom?
They're shaking their head that there will be.
Yes. If you'd like to come up and add to it, come on up.
Yes, actually, so.
Name and address, please.
Sorry, Darren Smith, Arch Icon Development, 509 Walker Street, Woodbine, Iowa. Actually, we worked with Center for Sulan on the Aberdeen Apartments of the old Central High School annex, so they help with supportive services for tenants there. On this one, because this has to be for the chronically homeless, Jeanette suggested that we work with Heartland Counseling Services. So Jennifer Jackson has been great to work with, and they receive, so they're responsible for placing the tenants and making sure that they're eligible and they will be chronically homeless, they'll have a place on-site, and they also receive tenant rental assistance as well. So financially, it works well, seem to be a great partner. So they'll have space on-site, and there will be, we were gonna do 1-1, 1-2, and 1-3, but they suggested no 3, so we're gonna do 2-1s and a 2-bedroom. Any other questions?
Thank you. I think it's, yeah, much needed in the community. It's a great step for us to move forward in assisting our homeless and getting as many, you know, in permanent situation as we can. And I like the location, too.
Never enough, yes.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jill.
Mayor, I need to abstain on that item, conflict of interest for 9A.
Thank you. B is a resolution granting a permit to FibroCom to maintain underground cable in the area of 10th Street and Douglas Street. C is a resolution approving a fiscal management services agreement with the Regional Convention and Visitors Bureau in connection with the Regional Sports Authority District Grant. D is a resolution approving an agreement to terminate the lease with Krabs Car Rental at 6115 Mitchell Street at the airport. Ten are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual by approving an updated job description for the wastewater treatment plant electric maintenance technician position. B is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual and Salary Schedule by approving an updated job description for the Neighborhood Services Manager position. Eleven is purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Hawkins for ananatic polymer solution for the water treatment plant. B is a resolution approving renewal option 1 to the purchase orders awarded to Bounty Medical for medical equipment supplies and pharmaceuticals for the Fire Department Emergency Medical Services Division. Twelve are applications for liquor license and beer license. Thirteen are boards, commission, and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes 5-0 on the one item Mr. Moore did abstain. Appointments to boards, commissions, committees. I move the reappointment of Audrey Anderson to the Environmental Advisory Board.
Second.
It's not working today. Yeah, it is now, but I hit it twice. Passes 5-0. Fifteen's a motion appointing Donna Sanchez to the Environmental Advisory Board. I'll move that. Second. Passes 5-0. Sixteen's a motion appointing Sarah Bernson to the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. I'll move that. Second. Passes 5-0. Seventeen's a hearing and resolution adopting an annual plan for the Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open, is there anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Eighteen's a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Hertz rental car for the lease of the land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that. Second. Passes 5-0. Nineteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the MLK parking hearing, parking ramp repair projects. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Twenty's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Headington Park Splash Pad Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open. This will have a restroom facility, correct? I think I saw that, but I want to make sure, because I told somebody that.
Mayor and Council, Aunt Wallace, Parks and Recreation Manager. Yes, the Splash Pad will have a restroom. All our Splash Pads have restroom.
I was wondering about the baseball dam, the baseball diamond that's there with the fence, is that gonna still be there? And then the equipment that's currently there?
So we don't have any plans for new equipment. We're gonna put basketball, basketball facility out there. The baseball facility will remain in Splash Pad, but I don't have any updates on the playground equipment.
It's not going away.
It's not going away.
No.
Thank you.
Hearing is now closed. Passes 5-0. Twenty-one's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the utility lining project. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Twenty-two's a hearing and resolution designing an area of the city appropriate for an urban renewal project and adopting Amendment Number 3 to the amended and restated combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Plan. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Twenty-three's an ordinance amending Chapter 3.10 to combine Floyd River Urban Renewal Pax Inc. from the district to revise the legal description to include Highway 75 North Urban Renewal Subarea. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes 5-0. Anybody opposed, waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Ordinance is twenty-four's a resolution adopting the first quarter supplement to the municipal code. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes 5-0. Twenty-five's an ordinance amending Chapter 1.01 Code Adoption to provide for the adoption of the municipal code. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes 5-0. Anybody opposed, waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Move second and third.
Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Twenty-six is an ordinance amending Chapter 2.12 of the employee residency requirements by expanding the mileage requirement where city employees may reside.
Mayor and Council, I've received, I think we all received, an email from a citizen asking us, I thought he raised a lot of good questions in his email and was asking for a little bit more of a comprehensive analysis on this topic, and I don't, I don't see any issue doing that. So in that regard, I wanted to see what everyone would think about deferring the item until, for two weeks, to April 17th. If staff is able to get that kind of information available that was called for in the email.
I don't know that we'd be able to get it that quickly. I'd almost recommend you delete it, and then when we can get that completed, we'd bring it back.
Recommend that we delete it?
Yeah, yes, and then we can bring it back. One discussion, and I think that has some merit, is maybe seeing if that should be part of the classification and compensation study. We could have a neutral third party do research on residency requirements for cities as it, as it pertains to our community.
Is it, it's a little bit time-sensitive, though, isn't it? For recruiting and for hiring?
No, Bertrand, Human Resources Director. It's not necessarily urgent that we have to get it wrapped up in two weeks, but we are always hiring and we are always challenged with getting applicants, especially in the EMS departments, where we've had individuals say they won't apply because of the residency requirement, they won't, where they're living. So we do have data for that department and division. I guess as quickly as we can get something, but.
Councilmember Moore, maybe if you're gonna defer, maybe defer it a month. Just do four weeks. I just know with the workload of what's going on, that, that would give us more time.
Let's not put it at May.
May 1st?
Chief, did you have any? I look, I look with favor upon this proposal, I want you to know that, but some questions were raised, and I thought they deserved an answer, and I would like to try to get that answer before we vote, unless the majority of the council want to go ahead, if you want to go ahead and proceed to vote on it.
Yeah, unless knowing, without knowing what those questions are, I provided some information that shows that we're the most restrictive city of the Big Ten and what it's doing to some of our recruiting. So again, not knowing what those questions are, I'd have to defer to you guys.
I don't want to hurt your recruiting efforts, I really don't. But by the same token, I want to make sure we're making a sound decision. Thoughts on this?
Well, no, my only thought would be, I'm, I'm comfortable with what was proposed. I'm a proponent of expanding this, I understand that our back's against the wall. The only thing I would say is I didn't get a chance to read that email. I think it was just sent out today, so I didn't get a chance to.
I think it was, too, Alex.
Mayor and Council, one other option is, since it's an ordinance, it requires three readings. If you wanted to keep it progressing, you could pass first, you could vote on first reading, and that would, in effect, almost get it to May 1st anyways if you did one reading a week.
I'd like to at least do that. I would like to keep moving, if that's okay. Consider this first reading, and then that gives us.
But will that give you the opportunity, will that give staff the opportunity to?
Just answer those questions?
Address some of these questions?
I believe so, because that would give us three weeks to the third reading. And then if at that point we don't.
Well, in three.
Sufficient information, we could defer to. Or the 17th. And then at that point, if we don't have sufficient information for you, you could defer it at that point.
I just want to always ask the next question, because we had to raise the pay, or we weren't gonna get anybody. Now we have to expand the miles, and we're not gonna get anybody, what's next? Do we just let them hire themselves? Would that be an easier way of not test and not have to have a license to start? Or? What do we have to do? Well, you have to admit, I'm right on this.
Well, we're trying to become more in line wage-wise, and also try to expand our applicant pool as best we can. The current residential environment is restrictive for some individuals, so opening that up just opens up our applicant pool that much more.
Well, when you bring it back, I'd like to know what the pay in Sioux, we always hear about Sioux Falls and other places. I want to know what their pay is, because I don't believe it's as high as ours.
For which specific position?
You're doing a lot for him and the police.
I don't believe it's as high as ours either, Mayor.
What's that?
I don't believe it's, I think you're right.
Yeah, so we gave more items.
It's for the whole city.
Anyway, this has to be moved, so.
It's for all of the employees, not just fire and police, but they have been the most vocal and really.
Yeah, I'm not either one, but go ahead, I get it.
I'll move.
Get it for Wick.
I'll move the item then for first reading.
Second. And I guess I would just say, I mean, in an answer to the mayor's question, I think that we need to continue to be creative. I think that we're investing in our community and our workforce in a lot of different ways, and we need to be creative. And yes, sometimes pay scales need to increase with the times, we need to be flexible with where people want to work. Times are certainly changing, and I know that this is one of the ways that unfortunately we have to evolve, and gotta make sure that we're doing that, because if we want to recruit more businesses and get more people coming here, we're gonna have to start retaining more talent and making sure that they want to live. I appreciate your willingness to think about what else we could be doing to address this. Hopefully, it's not something that's always just more, more funding or pay increases, but hopefully this can be effective.
I did move it. The first.
You did.
Alex hit a second. It affects all departments, right?
It affects everybody, all the departments.
Yeah.
It passes 3 to 2. Mr. O'Kane and myself vote no. You're like the Lone Ranger. Thank you, Matthew, for making me feel welcome today. Twenty-seven's an ordinance amending Chapter 13.808 Sanitary Sewer Rates to Increase the Sewer Rates Effective July 1st, 2023. I'll move that.
Second.
Tom Pingel, Utilities Director. We have Will here from Hazen &amp; Sawyer today to present on the three users, that the small, medium, and large user for the industry and the residents, on how this would impact their rates. And we also have, oh, Michael here, sorry, from McClure. He's gonna briefly touch on the process, going through the IDNR, what we have to achieve still.
Thanks, Tom. Evening, Councilmembers. Good to be with you again, I was here last week. My name is Will Martin, I'm with Hazen &amp; Sawyer. I've been the project manager for the wastewater plant, facility plan that's leading into the improvements and the rate adjustments that are proposed here. As Tom mentioned, this is really a follow-up from last week. The question came up to see the proposed impacts across, you know, more potential customers across the city, so that's what we'll present here. And like Tom said, Michael Washburn of McClure.
As Tom mentioned, this is really a follow-up from last week. The question came up to see the proposed impacts across, you know, more potential customers across the city, so that's what we'll present here. And like Tom said, Michael Washburn of McClure is gonna talk a little bit about the regulatory process. And certainly, any questions that you guys have, happy to jump into it as you, as we get through it. So we're gonna show three kind of hypothetical household impacts. The first one being a small household uses three thousand gallons per month. Just kind of for reference for everyone, you know, a typical number is that each person uses about a hundred gallons per day of water, so it's kind of like a small, single-person household, give or take. And what we would see with these rate increases going from about twenty-two fifty in current year, twenty percent increase in proposed for July first, twenty twenty-three, that goes up to about twenty-seven dollars in the next year. Ten percent increase thereafter, just slightly below thirty dollars, and then three percent from twenty twenty-seven and on. So all told, going from about twenty-two fifty per month for this household up to about thirty dollars at the end of this period of rate increases.
That first one, I'm sorry, you said was one or two people living there? Couple?
Yeah, one to two people. This is a low-usage household.
I got my bill the other day, and I actually really paid attention to it, and it was around eighteen dollars for the sewer for my husband and I.
Yep, and, you know, that's a good point, Ms. Janer, that, you know, there are multiple components, right? Water and sewer come on the same bill, so this would be the sewer-specific one.
Right. Right, I, yep, I looked at the breakdown on it, and the sewer itself was like seventeen dollars and eighty cents, I think.
This next one is twice the usage, so it's a six thousand gallon. We call this kind of a small family household. The overall trend is the same, same percentage increase is applied to the rates that this household pays. Going from about a little bit less than forty-two dollars in this current year, up to about fifty next year, fifty-five thereafter, and then about fifty-seven dollars, give or take, at the end of this period. Would say, you know, when I looked at the data for the city, the, you know, the typical household, if there is one, is kind of somewhere between these two numbers that we just saw, so three thousand on the small end, six thousand on kind of the upper end of a medium-sized household. And then large family household, again, twice what we just looked at, so twelve thousand gallons per month. Goes from about eighty dollars currently, again, same trend, a little bit over ninety-five the year after, a hundred and six, and then a little bit under a hundred and ten the year that follows. And I apologize, I don't have it in this particular presentation, but if it's helpful for the council members, we can show, you know, kind of where these, not these numbers specifically, but kind of where residential rates land in comparison to other peer utilities. I can bring those up at the end if it's helpful for you guys to see, see again, so. Last piece on this, this is a commercial business using twenty-four thousand gallons per, gallons per month, so about twice the size of a large household. Again, same trend, we're applying, we're proposing to apply the same rate, rate adjustments to commercial facilities that residential facilities see. Gone from a hundred and sixty-five in current year, up a little bit less than two hundred next year, two twenty the year that follows, and then a little bit less than two twenty-five.
Were the commercials always treated for rates the same as a household? They were always part of?
I mean, you know.
They were always paying sixty percent of the bill?
Correct, yep. So to kind of get in more depth of what you're asking, everybody across in the whole city, whether you're a commercial or a resident, these residential rates will impact them. The industrial rates only impact our twenty-three major industrial users that are permitted. The second piece of this are industrial facilities. To Tom's point, you know, there are separate adjustments proposed here. As we discussed last time, you know, as we looked at the improvements needed at the facility, we looked at the flow contributions, the load contributions, the kind of maintenance upkeep repairs that are needed. Fifty-fifty split of that additional revenue is the approach proposed here, given the burdens that those costs impose on the city. The industrial revenue base is much smaller to start. It's about forty to six, forty percent industrial, the current revenue base compared to sixty percent residential, commercial. So to catch up, they're seeing a steeper revenue increase. Instead of twenty-ten-three, it's thirty, twenty, twenty, and then five percent thereafter. So you'll see a different pattern on these rate adjustments. We looked at three hypothetical industries, this first one being a small, a small industry, and you'll see that, you know, the costs here vary quite a bit, depending on the industry involved, flows, amount of pollutants they're sending to the facility that need to be treated. This one on the smaller end, these are annual charges. There's more variability on these, because there's a load-based component that can really fluctuate depending on what the facility's doing. This facility would see their current charges at about forty thousand dollars per year. They would see about fifty thousand dollars the year, the first year of these increases, so starting on July first, goes up to about sixty thousand per year, July first, twenty twenty-four, and then would be a little bit over seventy thousand in the final year, twenty twenty-six. A medium-sized industry, and again, we left the names off of here. We can talk about who they are if it's appropriate. I think the council members have that information in private, I believe, but... So this medium-sized facility would see about four hundred thousand dollars per year. Current charges would go up to about five hundred and ten thousand in currently proposed increases on July first, about six hundred and ten thousand, starting July twenty, twenty-four, and then about seven hundred and thirty thousand at the final year. And then finally, the large industrial user that we had picked out for reference, they currently pay about five million dollars under, you know, current flows, loadings, and rate structuring. That would increase to about six point six million dollars with the rate increases proposed to go into effect on July first. Goes up to about seven point nine million the year after, and then about nine and a half million in... And then, Michael, you wanna walk through the break?
Hi, Michael Washburn, McClure Engineering Company, six seventeen Pierce Street. We wanted to provide the council an update on where we stand with the regulatory approvals. Let's see, how do I, next one, here we go. So we've been working very closely with the DNR throughout the facility plan, and we're following their standard process step by step so that everything gets approved. As you can see, there's four main steps. The first two steps have been completed, and where we currently stand is we're waiting on the DNR, so the ball's in their court to provide us with the final numeric F limit limits that the facility's gonna have to meet after the projects are completed. So once we get those from the DNR, we have to publish them, and there's a thirty-day comment period where the public can comment on how the project may impact water quality in the receiving stream. So once that thirty-day comment period is complete, we have to respond to any comments, submit those to the state. They review and approve that as part of the anti-degradation process. And then at that point, the facility plan can be submitted for their review and approval. And when you submit the facility plan, that's also when you submit your initial funding application to the state. In this project, we're intending to use the State Revolving Fund loan program through the state. Cities used that many times before. The next application deadline is June first of this year, so that's when the funding application, the facility plan get submitted, and it's basically ninety days for them to review and approve the plan and the funding. So September this year, the city should be on the approved funding list.
And these are for the low-interest-rate SRF?
Correct. Yep, they have a twenty-year loan and a thirty-year loan, different interest rates.
Which one are we taking, Teresa? If you don't mind me asking.
Teresa Pitch, Finance Director, we will do a thirty-year loan on this SRF just to keep the...
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
A thirty-year loan to keep the payment reasonable for us and affordable.
Right, and the rates will make the payments on the loan?
What's that? Yes. Yep.
These rates go into effect when?
July one this year.
So we won't necessarily know that they've approved our plan by the time these rates go into effect?
Correct.
The plan will be submitted with a pro forma, which will include these rates so that they're able to approve the plan. They will not approve the plan if we do not have rates set in place.
I get all that. Again, I, this is like my third time. I want to make sure that the DNR signs off on this. I don't think that's an unreasonable request when you're asking for these kind of rate increases.
Oh, I agree.
That horse death, but we've wasted a lot of money down there that we're, we got nothing for, nothing, other than higher rates than we should be paying, so...
Michael, let me ask you with regard to the facility plan and working with DNR, they've seen, it's not like we're working on the plan and then it will be submitted, and they see it cold for the first time. That's, haven't you been working closely?
Yeah, we have. We've had several meetings. They know about this project. We just have to follow their process, so...
Have you had to revise or change anything that you can talk about? Has it been going fairly smoothly, or?
It's gone smoothly, yeah. The first two approvals came through very quickly, actually, so they've been good to work with so far.
I'd like to ask, when we talked about the twenty-three industrial customers, you know, that their rate is going up significantly more in the front end, and you said that they were permitted customers, can we talk a little bit about why they're permitted and what that means?
Yeah, so the EPA mandates that, since we're such a large city, we run and operate our own pre-treatment coordination program. With that, we have to employ a pre-treatment coordinator, which we have, and their job is to maintain that they're doing their limits and all that. But the basis of this is because we're a large city, we have industrial users that use our collection system in our wastewater plant, and in order for that to be accepted, the amount of pollutants and the amount of flow, they have to be permitted by the feds through, that gives us the authority to permit them, so...
And then their waste is tested?
Yep.
As it comes in?
Yep, they're, actually, their waste is collected every day. They don't know what days we actually are sampling for.
Randomly?
And, yep, they, it's a pretty strict process. It's, it's, it's hard to explain in just a couple minutes.
Right, right. So the load versus the flow, let me just lightly ask about that. Is their flow equal to residential flow, or is that?
Yep, it's pretty close. It's fifty-fifty.
Right, okay. It's the flow?
Well, I guess I'm a little off. The residential's flow is a little bit more. I think it's about fifty-nine, sixty percent.
But it's the load that causes the problems?
Correct.
That takes the most?
Yep. The flow, you know, you have to pump it, and you have to move it around, and that takes energy. But the treatment of the, the treatment is the actual pollutants that are in the water that need to be removed.
Right, and due to the nature of the kind of industry that we have in Sioux City, it's kind of a heavier?
Yeah.
Load. I don't know how to, what the terminology is.
Yep, yep. The concentration of our pollutants in our water is sometimes the highest in the state, sometimes the second highest. It's always either us or Cedar Rapids. So we have a very high concentrated waste stream. Typically, I'm gonna throw some numbers at you. Typically, you see maybe at a smaller wastewater plant, like the BOD is maybe a hundred, two hundred milligrams per liter. Ours is a thousand. Nine hundred to a thousand typically on average a month, so it's ten times more polluted than a typical wastewater plant.
This investment that we're making in our wastewater treatment plant is really going to almost guarantee a great service to our twenty-three industries that need it to operate their business, right?
Yep, yep.
I'm, yeah.
And all our...
I think we forget about that. I mean, I support these industries. We need them. They're great employers, you know, they're great partners of the city, and, you know, I never want them to feel like we're just slamming them with a big bill because they're, you know, an industry and we feel like they can afford it. It's, we need them, and they need us to be able to function.
We've, we've, you know, have several meetings with the industries, and we've told them how much the city is and the council is supportive of them and how we need them, and, you know, we want to emphasize that we're, we, you know, obviously don't want to increase rates, but this is something that we have to do. It's a generational project. Hopefully, it's a once-in-our-lifetime big rate increase type of thing.
And this isn't optional. It's not that we're doing it just because we are trading in the car.
Yeah.
I mean...
Yep.
We're, we're being asked to do it.
Correct.
That's what I was gonna say, is it's tough when your back's against the wall, and you need to upgrade a plant and get it into compliance and do everything you can as quickly as you can, and, yeah, everyone's going to feel it, that's for sure.
Will, did you have something you wanted to add? I...
Yeah, I was gonna say for reference on that size question, I looked at this. Your facility is about the same size as the biggest plant that Atlanta has in their city in terms of load capacity, so it's outsized for the...
Was there a reference made to Colorado during our meeting, the last one that we had with the industry?
Yeah, our, we've looked at Denver, their plant, their concentration of pollutants is way lower than ours, but if you add up the total pounds per day, we're pretty similar to those size facility.
Right.
We might not have the flow that these big cities have, but we certainly have the same amount of pounds of pollutants that we have to treat every day, which makes it pretty difficult.
Because even though we're Little Sioux City...
Yep.
We don't, we don't compare to a lot of other cities in that way.
Nope, it's just, in our state, it's just us and Cedar Rapids. They, their plant is significantly larger than ours.
And this will lead us to being able to add more industry later on if we choose to, you know, have more growth?
Yep.
In phase three?
If the growth is very large, or we have a large industry coming to town, that's why we have phase three set.
Yep, we would have that up.
Ready, yep, so we could just start rolling right into it to accommodate a large user.
The mayor's earlier point, though, we want to make sure we're doing it right, and that, and that industries and the citizens and the commercial users all deserve that. They expect that. We have to do it right. It's been piecemeal in the past. We don't need to really dwell on the past, but not to put any pressure on your company, but I mean, it really does have to be done right this time, and...
But the pressure is on.
We've looked at all the options and have considered all the options. I would like, I think it's important to our residents, for the residential users, to look at where we are with other cities in Iowa. If we could compare that chart that you had made...
Give me one second.
Previously. Because we weren't on the top, we weren't on the bottom, if I recall. We were somewhat in the middle. This might move us up, but the other cities we're comparing ourselves to, we don't know what their plans are, do we, Tom?
No, we know, like Cedar Rapids, they're up there right now. You can see where they are. They are doing a very large project here in the next few years. They're, they're gonna inject five hundred million dollars just to fix one treatment process. This, our money's fixing our whole plant. They're injecting half a billion dollars to fix one process, so they're, they're gonna move up as we move up, and other cities that don't obviously start falling down, but when they need to put capital, it's just a cycle. You see it over, you know, thirty years, guys at the bottom move to the top.
Yeah, dumb to the top when they have to upgrade.
Right, right, and it's never gonna be less money than it is today to do it. You know, nothing's getting cheaper.
So this is on the low use?
Correct, this is the low user. And so this is only showing the first year of increases to the ones proposed for July first of this year. To Tom's point, I don't believe that there's adjustments to the other peer utilities on here. You know, the further out we project, the more we'd anticipate that they're seeing at least five percent increases per year, if not, if not more, so...
Did Cherokee have some kind of a facility improvement plan that they had that they would be?
I don't have any...
High, high-end?
Yeah, I mean, I know they just had to rebuild their plant probably five or ten years ago.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
And that was their entire plant, not just a part of it, but was the entire?
I think it was a, yeah, pretty much a full rebuild.
I like the point that you made about the bill that they get from the city, our residents do. That's many things on the bill, not just the sewer. And again, you look at the bottom and see what the total is, and then you think, oh, I'm gonna add a X percentage to this, but we're really not. You're just adding it to the sewer portion of it. So I am guilty of not breaking the bill down myself. It just, you look at the corner, how much is gonna be paid, and, but there's water, there's sewer, there's service fees, there's insurance if you have the, from the curb, you know, in, there's a lot on there.
Stormwater's on there, solid waste collection.
Everything's on there, yep.
What usage is this chart?
This is about, it's one thousand cubic feet, which is like seventy-five hundred gallons, if I'm doing my math correctly. So give or take, it's a little bit in between the like medium and large household that we showed before. The reason why is that one MCF, I believe that's the benchmarking number that University of Iowa is basing all this around, so apologies for the kind of mismatch there, but it's a standard metric that's out there, so similar, you know, trend here, and I have the industrial numbers as well that shows, you know, a different trend of where you lie, but same, same trend here, right, that, you know, two cities in the middle and staying, moving a little bit further up in the middle, but same thing, we'd expect that, you know, other utilities are making similar adjustments over a...
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Would you like to see the industrial side as well?
Sure, we have it readily available. Because residential's doing the twenty percent, ten percent, and three percent thereafter, industrial's thirty, twenty, twenty, and five percent thereafter. Is the thereafter going to be reviewed on an annual basis, the five percent?
Yeah, that'll have to come back to council, because this one's just approving up to twenty-six, and then thereafter, we'll bring it back for the five and the three.
And is that up to five percent, or is that...
Right now, it's just capped at five percent, yep.
Okay, so this one is...
So, the, this is a large, a large industry, I would say that, you know, like, the hundred and fifty thousand, this is per month, so that's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, three million dollars, so it's a little bit smaller than the large industry that we showed previously, but what you can see is that, you know, cities currently on the low end of peer utilities, what they charge industries. The one circled there, that's the fifty percent cost allocation split that we're proposing, and this is actually projected to the end of the period of rate increases, so twenty twenty-six, so you can see industries move from, you know, almost the very low end of peer utilities up towards kind of upper middle with where we're proposing to adjust rates.
Okay.
I'm curious why you don't have Cedar Rapids in there, if our flows are similar, but...
They are, they're two to the right of the one that's circled. I would say, you know, this, I believe there's like a five percent increase included for other utilities, that's not specific for Cedar Rapids, they are, when I looked, I wasn't able to find any specifics on their proposed adjustments for industries, but what I understand, they're capitalizing or financing a lot of their facility improvements with adjustments to industries. Like I said, I just wasn't able to find the specifically proposed ordinances that they had on their, on their books. So, I'd expect that that, that number should actually be a lot bigger as we project that forward.
Thank you.
Of course.
I don't know if it has any more questions.
Passes five zero, I don't think you have to ask, but I want to waive the rules because I don't, so I'll just keep moving. Citizens, any citizen to be heard, please come to the microphone and state your name and address, please, for the record.
This one?
Yeah.
Hi, Ed David.
You got to say your address, too, if you don't mind.
Nine oh four South Paxton. I just had a little statement about the assessments, just wanted to read some prepared remarks as well. I feel there's a legitimate need for an investigation into the conduct of the Sioux City Assessor's Office regarding the most recent round of assessments for assessment year twenty twenty-three. Either through negligence, incompetence, or inexperience, residents of Sioux City have been subjected to egregious and unfair assessments of their property values. I'm calling on the mayor, city council, and county board of supervisors to remedy this situation. It's through their decision-making and hiring authorities as a whole that a less-than-qualified individual now has the power and sole discretion to conduct these questionable assessments. They should have known that this job is too big for an inexperienced person to tackle without assistance from either the county assessor or consultants with significant experience computing comps and determining property values. What the residents of Sioux City need now, and what I'm calling on the council to enact, is a process that creates one hundred percent transparency in how these assessments are conducted. Every property owner in Sioux City should be able to call and get an answer regarding what comps were specifically used to determine property value. This should be available on request. The standard reply of mass comps, and that's what the sales are, doesn't cut it. There are too many variables that the assessor is conveniently disregarding when conducting these assessments. For instance, were the comps based on sales of homes that were flipped or had significant upgrades or remodeling? Further, I feel there should be an established threshold, either percentage change in value or dollar amount, that triggers a review. For example, an increase of forty-two percent from one assessment year to the next, which is what mine was, or perhaps sixty-three percent since the last actual appraisal, which mine was four years ago. That's all.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. O'Kane.
Well, last weekend, I was at the Bourbon Theater in Lincoln, Nebraska, and I got to see Tech Nine perform, and it was pretty great. I got to speak with one of the opening acts named Denim, and I was letting him know I was from Sioux City, and he had some pretty great things to say about Sioux City. He's performed here, and he had a lot of great things to say about the marquee. So, it was kind of neat being in another city at a venue the size of Bourbon Theater, speaking to somebody that was just performing in front of nine hundred-plus people, and to have them say, oh, I've been to Sioux City, I performed there. That was pretty rewarding to hear. So, I wanted to share that. The other thing was, I'm sure everybody's seen in the journal, over half a million Iowa voters have been moved to the inactive status. We have to get people out there, we have to get people registered to vote, we have to get people voting in Iowa, not just for our mayor, but in general, in elections.
Assessments, but go ahead.
Yeah. That's, that's been a trend that we've taken in Iowa for a long time, we really have to make sure that we're educating people on their voter rights. That's changed since people have been moved to the inactive status, there's people that don't realize that they're, they're losing their ability to vote, and I, I think the more people that understand how voting works in Iowa and how it's changed over the years, the better off we'll all be for it.
They've been moved to inactive, can you tell them what to do?
If they've been moved inactive, they have to...
They have to re-register.
Yeah, they have to re-register.
That's everything I've got. Julie?
I don't have anything today, I think I stressed my support of the remodel of the wastewater treatment plant, the rebuild, and I just want everybody to really give that some thought and understand that we don't take that lightly, it's very serious, the state of repair that it's in now, and something bad could happen any day, so we just really need to keep moving forward if we possibly can.
I'll bring up that meeting, but I don't know, no, okay. I guess I, I just wanted to say to Ed, I mean, I understand it takes a lot to come here and at least even prepare a statement and share that on behalf of yourself and friends or neighbors, whoever that is, so I recognize and I appreciate you doing so, and being respectful about it. I can't say I agree with all of that, but I at least will tell you I completely agree with your frustration and the situation that, that sometimes people find themselves in. I do think that there's a great deal of information left out of those notices, and they're sometimes difficult to understand of different complex processes, as far as what is going to be assessed and what that's ultimately going to look like in the very end. I know that I was not understanding fully and grasping it, so I made a phone call and was able to at least get more information, but hopefully more can come of that, but I, I agree, we need to move towards a better process where we have more understanding, and I know I spoke with Tyler pretty at length, and I know he's committed to doing that, to try to make it easier to understand and at least more to follow, so I look forward to that as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mayor and council, I just want to let you know, my wife and I attended an event at the Orpheum Theater, and it's the best customer service ever. We can be so proud of the Orpheum Theater and, and the people that work there, it's just, it's just amazing, it really is. I'm really proud to have the Orpheum Theater in downtown Sioux City, Iowa. That's all I have.
What'd you go to?
To a bandits game, and they even opened a concession stand on the other side, I don't know how they got that done, but it was nice and not have to walk three-quarters of a mile around to get a popcorn, so appreciate that.
You got one more thing?
I just had one more, I saw Pat and Dave in the back, and I wanted to give our utilities and streets crews a shout-out. I was in Minneapolis this last weekend and stayed in their downtown, one of the hotels in their downtown, right next to US Banks. After that snowfall, I tell you what, the people of Sioux City would not have been able to live through that, because that, the amount of snow that I saw in the middle of streets, and when I left on Sunday, it still wasn't cleared out, so there was absolute, people were ramping into the parking spaces next to the downtown buildings and stores, and then stuck there for multiple days and trying to shovel it out, so I know our crews are working hard, but I know when I was driving up there, and I, my car almost got swallowed by a couple potholes, so apparently it's a problem in Minnesota as well, so, but anyway, just appreciate everything you guys have done, hopefully we're through the, the bad part of winter, we'll see what, what weather we have coming, but hopefully we made it through, so thank you all.
Move we adjourn. Second.
Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Let me see if I heard...
Aye.
Tech nine?
I did.
It was good?